So I'm going to go through the roster. Commissioner Condon.
Here.
Commissioner Lupo. I see you.
Here, sorry.
Commissioner Ambrosey.
Here.
Commissioner Panici.
Here.
And. Will Agresta.
I'm here.
Rick Schultz.
President, you have Barbara here.
From the committee.
Yes, I'm here.
And Francisco Gomes is here.
Sure.
As an invited guest and speaker.
John has been, Formicella is also here.
I am here, yes.
Oh, I don't see you, John.
Oh, I called in, so it might only show caller or something.
So you're a CEO. Well, thanks for joining us, Jonathan. And Barbara.
Oh, no problem.
Are there any other advisory committee members here?
Okay, well, if not, I'm going to open it to general public participation if there's any members of the public. Would like to participate in this remote meeting. Are there any members of the public? Harry Nun, then we'll go on to the next item on the agenda. Which is vision statement. I'm going to let Francisco take the meeting on from this point until adjournment. He has an agenda and he can lead us through it.
Thank you, I'll share my screen and which provides an overview of the agenda. And can everyone see the screen, my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, we have a lot of ground to cover, that being said, it's very straightforward. We have delivered, I've delivered a draft plan to the town. That is far from complete, it has the structure, the bones of the plan. But we really need some feedback from you as our steering committee on this advisory committee. Before we fill in some of those blanks. So we will begin by reviewing the plan's vision statement, the plan has one vision statement. And it's intended to provide a framework for everything in the plan. Following that, we have individual goals for specific topic areas of the plan, sections of the plan. And I would like to have a discussion about strategies that we might consider to support those goals, and I'll explain as we go. We will also review the draft future land use map. And also providing time permits, have a discussion about opportunities or recommendations for special focus areas. And as a reminder, that includes Stevenson Lumber Site, Chuck Hill School, and Cambridge Independence Drive, so basically the quarry. All right, let's start with the vision statement. And you can, I probably don't need to read this out loud, I'll let you all kind of read it to yourselves right now. And I'll just be quiet for a minute so you can think. And then let's talk about whether or not you feel this captures what you want to capture. Or provides the kind of direction or statement that the plan needs. And. I imagine you've probably gotten through it by now. So let's have an open conversation, I'll invite whoever would like to speak up to let me know what you think this vision statement, is it on the mark? Does it miss? Is there something missing? Does it say too much? Does what it say. Not represent your vision of Monroe? Whoever wants to speak first, make sure you unmute yourself and then speak up.
Well, I like it, I think it covers just about everything.
We, mission statements vary quite a bit, sometimes they're a sentence, sometimes a paragraph or two. If they get too big, it's easy to lose track of the message, so you want to keep it to a paragraph, I generally think. And then I'm sorry, I cut someone else off who was trying to speak.
No, that's okay, that was just me. I think it's great, I think it encompasses what we're trying to achieve. My only question is the last sentence, a wide selection of housing choice. I don't know if we have that right now. But I think that's part of the goal for the future, I don't know what anyone else thinks, but I think the rest of it fits perfectly.
Yeah, the vision should connect to where you're at, so it should look familiar to you, and that it's not describing a totally different world, right? But at the same time, it should be looking to the future in what is possible or what it is you're trying to achieve, so. It doesn't necessarily describe everything that exists today. But it should reasonably describe a place that you can arrive at.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
We want a wider selection, we can point to our vision statement and say, hey, look, it's in the vision statement. That we want a wider selection of housing.
Well. And we would, right, and we would follow that up with the specific goal to expand housing choice and recommend various strategies for how to do so. But we want it all, we want the message to be consistent all the way through, and the most important things you value about your community or you want to achieve should be at least touched upon in this statement.
Francisco, I have a question.
Sure.
Well, I get that part of what you just said, but are there other places within the plan that things are sort of defined? As to what some things might mean, not necessarily the strategies to achieve them, but like, take the first sentence. In a rural environment. I mean, I mean, that can mean a lot of things to a lot of different people. Hey Bruno. Is, somewhere explain that more or define that more for Monroe?
Yeah, it's a good question, we do have an environmental resource chapter that takes a very high level look at what those resources are, rural resources, whether, you know, it's rivers and lakes and streams and hilltops and forested areas. But yeah, I mean, that's a somewhat subjective word. But I think it speaks to the fact that you have a natural landscape that you probably want to protect. I don't think as a community you see yourself as Trumbull or Milford. Right?
Yeah, but we also aren't Woodstock.
Right, right, so that, I mean, that's we're trying to work this balance, you're right, and Monroe's an interesting place because it truly is right in between the very rural and then the very suburban, and it's right in between that, you're at the south, you know, at the Trumbull line, you're much more suburban in nature along that line, and the further north you travel, the more rural the community becomes.
Yeah, if you look at the aerial photo, aerial photos on the cover, it's mostly canopy, tree canopy in Monroe still, even though there's a lot of subdivisions.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's true in Greenwich as well.
Right.
And this is Rick, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
A lot of towns indicate they are suburban with significant rural features.
Yeah.
So that's my two cents.
Well, I don't want to get rid of the rural, I think you should leave that in.
I think to Will's point, the ambiguity of what rural means, maybe, maybe we need to describe in a little more detail the landscape. You know, it's a tree-lined wooded community with natural resources, you know, a residential community located in a in a natural setting featuring, you know, hilltops and forests and water resources. I don't want to get too verbose with it because we, it does function better if we can keep it to a paragraph or so.
I wasn't suggesting that the vision statement would necessarily be different, it would be, you would find what rural means.
Okay.
Yeah, inside the plan someplace, why, why the town is a rural environment?
Okay, well, maybe we can do a better job of describing that in the environmental resources chapter of describing it rural and explaining what that means.
Dominic, just to have an input, the statement in itself is okay and it makes sense. But the statements could mean that we would implement these things in 100 years from now. The word doesn't say that what time in the future or near future are we implementing some of these things that, for instance, I look at the paragraph where it says Monroe strives towards a vibrant economy. So that would make sense to have it to serve as a community if we could enlarge it a bit more.
Yeah, well, we do, so we introduce it here very briefly, Dominic, but then we have an entire section on economic, on economic development. Where we do want to identify specific strategies, things that we're going to commit to, and we'll have an implementation plan that specifies when those should happen and what order. So we will provide that level of guidance and set some targets or goals. But this is really just designed to introduce the idea that this is something that's important to your community. If you're in Easton by comparison, just to your west.
I'll get him later.
You're not going to find this statement in there, right, it's not highly valued, they'd rather go to Monroe for what they need or elsewhere.
Now with that in mind, I'm satisfied with what you just said.
Well, Dominic also realized this is a 10-year plan, so we're supposed to achieve things within the 10-year. I mean, it can be longer range goals that get continued. But, I mean, obviously, economic development is a continuous thing, and protection of resources is a continuous thing, but it's, this is meant to be a 10-year plan, so it does have a timeframe.
Okay.
Francisco.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Something in here about our first responders or any of that kind of stuff, you know?
Yeah, I think that speaks to services, I think that would fall under services that the town provides. With access to goods, or maybe, maybe we describe services as a high level of service or high quality services.
Right.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
I think it's good for me.
Okay. Good, good, I'll adjust that one sentence to focus on a high, high level or high quality service to emphasize.
Francisco, you kind of say that in the second to last sentence.
Yeah, I said quality there, okay.
And that focuses on the.
Yeah, yeah, the other one is more economic-based services, so private, private sector services, whereas, right, the second to last is, you know, town and public safety and everything else, okay.
So you're ahead of your, you're ahead of your times.
Yeah. All right, okay, good, good, and so I think we're on the same page with this, that's, that's a very good start. Let's keep going, we do, we do have a lot of ground to cover. And if I can get the slides to advance, which we're not terribly interested in doing that right now, there we go. All right, the plan is divided into a few chapters or sections that cover major topic areas. And as you can see, that starts with economic development. Goes on to housing, facility and services, transportation and infrastructure, and environmental resources. So we'll, we're going to work through this in that order. Now, currently, we have we've established one primary goal for each one of these topic areas, and if if we think we need additional goals, that's fine, we can always expand that, there's no reason why we can't have more than one goal. Because these are very broad topic areas that we're covering. But the idea is to take the vision and start to break it down into smaller pieces, and then smaller pieces and smaller pieces. So this is the next step beyond the vision are the goals. And with economic development is to foster a vibrant economy that provides residents with access to goods, should be a comma there. Services and employment opportunities while diversifying the town's property tax base. All right, what do we think?
I believe that's true, I'm good with that.
I agree, I think that that's true for me for the goal.
Isn't that everybody's goal?
Yeah.
Sounds okay.
Let's hope.
It, it probably is because it's like a true statement, right, it's not, not a controversial statement. You know, that's usually why you do economic development, is to support your tax base and to provide services to people who want it, but you know, unlike a city, we're talking about a tax base that's really aimed at servicing your residents. Versus one that's intended to be some sort of regional draw or anything like that.
I don't know. Should be something about revitalization and, you know, the whole changeover to the rethinking the world.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe try to capture the idea that the town's going to remain flexible to changing commercial needs and demands. Something to that degree.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah.
Or trying to be in the, you know, ahead of that a little bit.
Right.
You know, while taking into account the changing market or something along those lines.
Right.
Being proactive.
Be responsive to market trends.
Yeah, adaptive.
Adaptive. Yeah, adaptive is a great word.
I don't know, do we want to pigeonhole ourselves with the economy that provides residents with access to goods and services and not one that also attracts customers or something along those lines from other towns to come in and, you know?
Yeah, we could say visitors as well, residents and visitors.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Okay. All right. Okay. Residents and visitors. Introducing adaptiveness into the language. All right, going beyond that statement. What strategies can we identify? You tell me what, what you think the town needs to do or change to achieve this goal. Yeah, you can start with little things or big things, you know, big picture or little tiny things, and just, let's just brainstorm a really quick list. And then, and then, then we can develop it on our side into, you know, some really organized strategies, but let's hear from you.
This is Jonathan Formicella, review and analyze current regulations and add on to them in support of new and innovative ways to conduct business. So if there's, if there's something in our regulations that doesn't allow for or doesn't specifically mention a certain type of business or way of living that the planning zoning commission through their subcommittee and through the full commission can address those needs over the next 10 years to make sure that our town is more responsive to the needs, the current needs of businesses.
That's good.
That's good, Jonathan, and streamlining our regulations should be a priority as well.
Now, Michael, when you say regulations, obviously zoning. And any, any other type of regs?
Well, the whole land use department of the, I know the, and when wetlands could be streamlined, that process as well, I mean, Oz is the worst, obviously.
So there's both, there's both regulations, right, which is the actual ordinance or code. And then there's the process, which is the administering that. So we're pointing to both of those, both process and, and actual ordinances and code to make it.
I think we should, we should support the moving everything online, digitalization of the application process and the fee process, because it's very cumbersome, it's slow-moving. I mean, I had firsthand experience with it myself, remodeling a house next door, and I was eye-opening.
Okay.
I know we're doing that, we're starting that already, but I think we should support it and it should be a goal.
Okay.
To fully digitalize the department.
Yeah, Rick, Will, I know, I know there's been work done on this front, and you guys are obviously trying to administer them as efficient a process as possible, but you guys want to speak to where you're, where you're at and you know, where you could go from where you're at.
You referring to the online permitting, Francisco?
Yeah, online permitting and any other, you know, procedural things that you, you guys have been eyeing that you would, would mind changing or, or actual regs?
Yeah, well, going back a year or two, the commission authorized a minor site plan review to, for staff to handle administratively.
Right.
We're going, we've had pretty good success with that, we're going to reexamine that. And you know, we just have to continue to move forward in other arenas. As you're aware, Francisco, the commission recently adopted the mixed-use regs. And the issue now is to continue to move forward in different geographical areas on 25, 111 and 34. Commission's going to look at signers regulations. Also, I'm getting calls from developers that want the commission to look at the architectural requirements. Francisco and I had a quick conversation today because we're seeing the national franchises going in a different direction with their architectural appearance, so that's something the commission has to look at too. Recently, staff's been working with McDonald's and it's, you know, it's a contemporary-looking building.
Okay.
You know, I think the plan, if it's going to talk about things. The plan should identify what things are wrong and what things should be done, it shouldn't just be a goal to, I mean, we always are trying to change things to make improvements, but
Right.
That blanket statement, you know, isn't really filled with truth. So it really behooves the plan to identify the things that it wants, and if you talk about even architecture, well, I mean, the plan should identify what kind of architecture it wants.
Or, or Will, we can point towards that as an issue that needs to be focused on, you, I maybe need to assemble a task force or a committee that can, you know, come up with some guidelines, they don't have to be standards, but, but guidelines that would advise your zoning regulations.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah, right, we got to identify the need and definitely come up with a list of things, a strategy for responding to that need and a list of action items, who does what, even if we're not getting all the details of that worked out in the plan, which we have a lot of ground to cover on the plan, we're not going to be able to get prescriptive about all of that stuff, but we can at least point to the actions necessary that will get you there.
Yeah, I just take offense to some issues of saying that the system's broken. I mean, every system has its pitfalls and every system can be improved, and every, and the systems are being improved, but just to say it's, it's broken without identifying the major things is kind of difficult for me to understand.
Right, I'm not sure, and whoever's defense may become, I'm not sure anyone said it was broken, but I, I think they want it to work easier.
Of course, who doesn't?
On, the online permitting system, is that something that you guys have looked into, talked about, or considering, or?
It's being developed, there's one level of trade permits that is going to go live soon.
Okay.
We're working towards the overall, the overall building permit process with all the underlying departments going, you know, working on that next, it's, you know, it's, it's not as simple. It's not as simple as people might think to automate that. There are a lot of moving parts in multiple departments with different environments.
That's why we need to make it a goal to support that process.
Yeah, no, I totally agree with that.
Okay. But you guys are moving in that direction.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely, Francisco, staff talks, staff meets, talks weekly with MetroCock.
Yeah, right, right, you're through MetroCock, right, yeah. Yeah, I thought, I thought I remembered that correctly, okay. All right, well, that's good, I mean, you're, you know, well into that process already, so you know, we've got an early success potentially, but we, you know, the plan should point to that to support that effort. So that in a few years, if for whatever reason the cost of that system becomes an issue. You can point to the plan and you say, hey, the plan identified this as being really important for, for the community and for the ease of use of the system, and it's something that we need to continue to maintain, even if there's some costs associated to it.
Should be a priority, along with the minor site plan review, that needs to be expanded as well, that will help streamline things for, keep the permitting process moving along, especially when a snag comes along. Or if there's a bottleneck, or if some paper sits on somebody's desk, the.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes it has to get to somebody's desk in order to actually use it. And it doesn't always get to someone's desk because it doesn't get used the way it's supposed to be.
Right.
Francisco, I wanted to just bring a thought in mind, everything is about, everything is about time and money when it comes to the process, permitting process. So we should put something in there that we are going to somehow facilitate and shorten that. When a business or a developer is thinking of going to the town, that's what he looks at. And what other layers that he has to negotiate.
Right.
That's very important.
Okay. Okay. All right. Now, anything else beyond maybe on, on, you know, the procedural side of things that the, the town could do to, or should be doing to support a vibrant economy?
Well, someone should identify the lands we have and the opportunities that we could offer as opposed to just, you know, the same, run in the mill of what the uses allow. I mean.
So Nicole, don't you have that? Nicole on E C?
We had a list of some sort, but I don't know where it landed. I know Bill's working on updating it. It was hard to really gather all the information and put it into one document.
I mean, one of the examples I would give is that we have a vision for this plan. Well, there should be an economic development vision for the town as well, because, you know, based on the opportunities and constraints of what the town has, there's only certain types of development, no matter how much you want it, will come and you have to focus your attention towards the ones that are more likely to be served by the resources and the infrastructure available. So obviously heavily sewered type businesses, we all know are never gonna be part of the mix. So putting attention there is a waste of time. Finding businesses that we could foster with the limited types of resources we have is, I think, something that the plan should kind of focus on or set forth another task force in trying to identify, to attract those kinds of businesses and the businesses that might take over the vacancies, vacancy spaces, because traditional retail offices are not coming really. You know, startups have been huge this year, not just in Monroe, but in the country. And how do, how have we attracted that? Have we done that? Do our uses attracted? Do our residents attract that?
What did you say, Will? What was?
Startup companies are
Startup companies?
On the all-time high this year in the country.
Um, so let, let me ask you this. It sounds like you're both describing what, what uses should we be expanding our business and commercial zones to, to make them more flexible and receptive to new emerging businesses? And maybe what areas should we be expanding our commercial zones into to allow for some of these new business types? Is that correct?
Well, that's the zoning side of it, but I think that comes after an evaluation or some kind of analysis of what kinds of businesses could we attract in this current economic climate? You know, I'll give you an example. I don't know if this would work in Monroe, but in some places they start with fostering medical offices and you get a cluster of all kinds of expansions of hospitals with, with their out clinics and their outpatient surgery stuff during different buildings. Then you get doctors following in that path and you start getting that kind of business. I don't know if that's good for Monroe or not, but, you know, you start fostering that and that builds energy and you get more things. And then when you have enough of those, the ancillary businesses come and fill in the gaps. You know, whether it's that or some other kind of business or other businesses, it can't, it's not just one. But, you know, what are the businesses we could attract? You know, we have an industrial park. It's not utilized very well. So how do we attract someone to utilize that? How do we get synergy amongst the different uses? Because likes, like, you know, attract to likes.
Okay. All right. Um, this town's, it sounds like the town obviously needs to do some homework and, and maybe we can figure some of that out and, and get it into the plan, but in addition to that, there really needs to be some strong marketing on behalf of the town, right, to position uh, some of your commercial lands to these, for these new businesses.
Well, that's true, but again, my point is we have to know if those, we can't just go market it. You have to market it in a smart way, knowing what you have, and then this is why you should come here.
Right. Well, a- as you mentioned, you don't have sewer. Um, fiber optics. Where, where do you have, I haven't, I haven't seen a map yet of your service in Monroe. I know you have fiber optic coming into Monroe. Is it along both Route 11 and 25? Because that's a huge factor for a lot of businesses. It's high-speed communications.
No idea.
All right. Well, we can, we can look into that. That, you know, for a lot of these emerging businesses you're talking about, Will, it, that's more important than infrastructure like wastewater.
Well, right, and that's what I'm talking about. What are the things that we have? What do we offer? You know, do we, do we have, do we offer companies that need to be more isolated, or do we have to have traffic-based cost, you know, businesses, which would be problematic?
All right.
Um, I know what you're selling before you can sell it.
Where, where does the town stand on incentives? Like, tax, tax deferment, tax increment financing? Has there ever been talk about creating a tip district or, or anything like that?
Not that I know of.
We just have a tax.
A, a tax abatement program?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and how, how does that work? Like, what kind of businesses are eligible or developers are eligible for it, or?
Yeah, they, they all are. And then they submit it to the first selectman's office and then it goes to the town council.
Okay.
P and Z hasn't been involved in that.
No. And has that been used much?
Swift Army knife, um, uh, noble gas is gonna do it.
Okay, okay. All right, so you do have some incentive programs already.
I mean, we could have incentive in zoning as well.
Yeah, true.
How would that work?
Well, you give an incentive by giving them more of something that they want, by them giving us something we want. So for instance, you can, you could get more market rate units if you did more affordable units, or you could get more of this if you had more open space.
Right.
You know, more density, if you, you can have more retail density if you build an amenity or something that's more serving the public.
And, and you don't, you don't currently have anything like that written into your regulations, do you?
I don't think so. Surely not anything we've used.
Right. All right. All right, that, that's a decent list. Does anyone have any, any ideas that, uh, to add to this or, or just something that we should look into, even if you don't have a fully formed thought on, on to how it, how we might recommend it?
I do think something that has some focus on revitalization of existing built stuff is probably an important thing in this plan going forward.
All right. And, and you're, you're imagine thinking about a lot of the shopping plazas that are aging and have vacancies.
Yeah. I mean, that's our, you know, at one time was the bread and butter, so.
Yep.
Yeah, Francisco, one of the incentives of the mixed use was to do that, to tap in to the upper floor areas for apartments.
Right, right. Okay. Well, that, that's a good, that's a good start. That, that, that gives me some marching orders. So let, let's, um, let's move on to the next topic. Housing. And our, our goal is, and then this looks pretty familiar to what we have in the vision statement upfront. Allow for a wide selection of housing choice that enables residents to live in Monroe through various stages of life and attracts new residents to the community.
I don't know if the current residents want more residence.
I know, I know. That's the challenge. It's usually, you know, close the door behind you on your way in, right? That's the challenge, but thi- this is really central to demographics that we're concerned about is that you're an aging community and households are shrinking overall, independent of the fact that you're an aging community. And so that means population decline, which is not great for economic development, for local businesses, tax base. You know, it might save you a little money with schools unless you're really, you still have to run the same school buildings, even if the classes are a little, not quite as full, so there's certain inefficiencies when enrollment sizes go down. Yet at the same time, uh, we're in this really interesting moment in time uh, where we have an influx of New Yorkers that might be here to stay. And so what the population contraction and losses we had been looking at for several years running or decades in some cases, and Monroe since around 2000 flattening and then in recent years declining. Um, or in school enrollment declining at least, uh, that might reverse. Uh, in which case, you know, do you want to seize the moment and maybe provide some more housing variety so that, by example, if there's strong demand for single-family homes, uh, there's gonna be good market for those. And if you're 80 years old and you're, you're, just can't maintain it anymore. If you have a housing choice in town that's more affordable and provides you the quality of life you need, then you could free up that housing unit, put it on the market. You have a new family that comes in, it's gonna reinvest in the community and to that property and continue to support the tax base. And that's how communities not, not only grows, but just sustains itself with that kind of turnover. Um, but uh, you need housing, if, if you want to keep those folks that have been in town for a long time and want to downsize, you need some more housing choice for them. And likewise, on the other end, i- if you have a young adult who might otherwise move out of town for the fact that there's nothing affordable for them, uh, you likely want to provide some housing choice for them too. So that's where we're at. You know, realizing, of course, that a lot of people just don't want things to change and, and and, and a suburban community would like to only see single-family homes.
Can, can that be maybe toned down, or, or that's maybe not the right word, but at the end of the sentence where you go and attracts residents. But the con, although Monroe through various stages of life doesn't quite mean retain, retention. But the concept of retention, retaining residents would be important, so various stages of life while retaining and attracting new residents, something like that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, obviously you solve a lot of your problem. You do have a lot of people that move out. And in the survey we did, a lot of people saying, said they were planning on moving out. Um, if you did a better job of retaining, you, you'd have more sustainable or, or steady population. All right. All right, anyone else on, on this goal? Is there any else? And, and we're not yet talking about how we do this, but we're talking about what, what we'd like to achieve. Is there anything else you'd like to achieve with respect to housing in Monroe? All right, well, let, let's talk about how, how we retain people and, and how we uh, provide housing choice. And, and we'll start with one idea that was, that has already been approved by the, the commission. And that is uh, mixed-use development in your commercial districts. You know, allowing for uh, apartments and affordable housing in, in those areas. That, that's an obvious first step that you've made great progress towards. But does anyone have any thoughts about that? Is there more that you could do in that area? Uh, could that be expanded geographically? Do you maybe allow more density of? You know, there are planned residential developments or any need to do in your subdivision regs? Go ahead.
You have to have a housing plan, I think, coming up, don't we, Will, in a year or two?
Yeah, I mean, in theory, you're supposed to have that anyway, but, but yes, we, we have more of a mandate coming up that could affect other funding sources and.
The, the affordable housing plan, it is, is really designed to increase or support compliance with 830G and to make sure communities are actively working towards providing affordable housing. So the focus of that is affordable housing. However, i- in our effort here, that's one component of housing. You know, we're thinking about all aspects of housing, market rate housing. You know, neighborhoods and single-family housing, uh, do you need more townhouse-type developments in town?
Hey, you wanna add senior?
Senior housing, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that a component that's missing, if you're gonna take those various stages of life, is assisted living. We don't have.
Yes.
I agree a hundred percent, especially if we bring in independent living, the next level is gonna be assisted. And even beyond that is a, is a nursing home or rehab facility.
Right.
Yeah, right. And we used to have that in the zoning code, but that was taken out.
Oh, really?
Why was it taken out, Will? Do you know?
Uh, because certain entities wanted it out until such time as someone might propose it.
Gotcha.
All right.
Cause our, our community is aging. It just makes sense that people are gonna start needing those services. Or even if you need to go into, you know, not suggesting, you know, a nursing home or rehab center, but there's nothing really in town for those people to go to. Or for their loved ones to be able to go close by to see them.
Yeah, and a rehab center actually is a good thing, because that's a, that could be a economic generator.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's bringing in that medical piece, you know, I think moving forward. I feel, Will, what, what are we gonna draw in? Because the brick and mortar may not be where we're going anymore.
It does put a large strain on uh, first responders when one of those pops into town. Right now, with your service and.
Want a rehab does?
Be interesting. Yeah, any nurse, rehab, any of those.
I mean, assisted living.
Assisted living, uh, nursing homes, any of those. I mean, a lot of Monroe's calls right now are to Trumbull, to go to St. Joe's and some of those when their ambulances are too overwhelmed.
Yeah.
Yeah. The assisted living do tend to have a lot of fall issues. Especially if they offer certain amenities at those assisted livings between the hours of four and six.
But what they, what they don't do is they don't generate a lot of traffic. They don't generate schoolchildren. They don't have other service courses other than those emergency service type costs.
Yeah.
And, and they can be rather attractive.
Yeah.
And quiet.
Well, let, let's talk about where in, in what zoning districts with, let's say, a hundred-unit nursing home be a good fit on couple, you know, on, I don't know, three acres, whatever, you can get a hundred units of nursing on five acres, maybe, whatever.
Ryan, what do you think, coming from a first responder perspective? I, I think obviously along a main corridor, which is straight to either hospitals, but.
I mean, yeah, I mean, either way, Monroe, you, you gotta, you're 20 minutes away from a hospital. Um, but it really doesn't matter, I mean, what part of town, uh, in that sense. Um, but I, you know, I'd see, I could see it popping up in the, um, I don't know. Is it gonna go in like an already neighborhood? You tear down a neighborhood and put one in, or do you put it more in a?
Well, you know, there, or something like that, you're obviously gonna target undeveloped land.
Yeah.
You know, as you mentioned, good, good highway access is preferable, so.
There's opportunities, there's opportunities at Victoria Drive, there's opportunities up in Stevenson. There's opportunities, there's opportunities at Victoria Drive, there's opportunities up in, uh, Stevenson area. There's opportunities on twenty-five, like where the, um. NBC facility is. Um.
Now, does it take away from the commercial use?
There's nothing, there's so much land there. There's like forty acres undeveloped there.
Yeah.
There's one building.
I guess I'm wondering what's the, what's the tax yet? Well, you know, it's not a burden on the school, so I guess it wouldn't be too bad of an idea if you were to put it in. One of those industrial zones.
So do you need, would, would a floating zone for that type of use be appropriate? So that in a floating zone would enable you to drop it in. To any district that you have right now, you could exclude certain districts. Um, any district you have right now, whether it's industrial, commercial, residential, provided certain criteria I met, right? Uh, access on a state roadway, certain size acreage, not a flooding, certain type of use, what, whatever. You, you could come up with the conditions. And then allows that sort of development to proceed. Do you have thoughts on that?
It would have to be a zone of sorts of its own in a way. So when it landed, it didn't retain the underlying zone, because we would not want necessarily. Any kind of residential zone landing and being an industrial. That would have, that would have other implications. What's that?
They're doing that in Trumbull, they're putting, um, apartments in industrial districts.
No, you're missing my point. You can, you can swap out the industrial for a different zone. Just don't leave the industrial districts on it.
Surrounding.
But no, it's not, it doesn't matter where it is. The point is you don't want to call it an industrial district anymore, because it opens the door for other things that you're not going to want.
Like a senior living sweatshop? I don't get it.
Well, so.
Industrial districts are not subject to eight thirty G.
So Will, Will brings up an important distinction between an overlay district, which you would retain the underlying zoning. And a floating zone, which. You change the district to that. Zone, so you would call it, uh, I don't know, a senior elderly housing district. And within that district, you can have nursing homes, assisted living facilities, and a whole, you know, a whole range of care. And as I meant, as I described, you could drop that into. Over onto a parcel or parcels in any one of your zoning districts. Provided it meets those criteria. And then those parcels become rezoned, that new district. So whatever they were before is gone. If they were industrial before, no more. Whereas an overlay would just allow you to do extra use. But you could still do the industrial uses on, in that area.
Will, what are we doing with the zone where the, um, senior housing is going to be in? Are we going to leave that be too?
No, they're creating their own district.
So is that going to be a, could that become a floating zone or will?
We can, we can re, we could repeat that and make that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So, yeah, they're sort of creating their own district and we could emulate that elsewhere.
So a floating zone is very much the town anticipating and being prescriptive about. Uh, anticipated requests for zone change. Uh, independently, you can, obviously you can have an applicant come in and say, I'd like to rezone this so that I can do this. Uh, or you could be a step ahead and say. We want to create, we want to create this type of zone that an applicant can come in and ask us. To rezone to this. In that way, you've, you've laid out all the rules. It's on your terms. And of course, because you're, it's a zone change. It's not an application for a land use. It's a zone change. You have discretion over whether or not you approve it. You can, you, you're not compelled. To approve the zone change. That's a discretionary decision. And that's the advantage of it.
So I agree that, that we should lay it out that way then.
Okay. Well, let's, let's point to that as a strategy. Uh, and, and you know, we can use language, you know, I realize this probably is worthy of a lot more thought and consideration. So we can use language like, you know, the, the planning zoning commission should explore the use of floating zones. Uh, to support senior housing facilities such as this, and then describe the, the benefits of that. And some of the consideration and the steps that need to be taken. Versus compel you to do so, versus say that the, the planning zoning commission should adopt a zoning. We want to give you, we want to point you in the right direction, but give you an opportunity to walk away from it if it turns out not to be a good idea. Okay. That's good. Anything else? Is there anything that needs, I realize you haven't had. Any subdivision developed in the past. Decade or so, or nothing much to speak of. Uh, is there anything that needs to be done with the subdivision regulations to? Better support or facilitate?
Hey, Francisco, it's Bruno.
Yeah.
Hey, Bruno. Great job today. Um. I think we just approved the subdivision, if I'm not.
Oh, yeah?
We've had, we've had maybe three in the last. I might, we had one ten lot subdivision in the last few years. We had a few two, three, eight, two, three lots.
Were they actually developed?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
In fact, we have an old subdivision of about twenty-two lots. That wasn't approved recently. That's an old one that's just got built as well.
Yeah, but we also just had the, we just had the fifty-five and older. Approved.
Well, that's not a subdivision, but that's a, that is a residential development.
That's not a subdivision?
No, it's not a sub, well, it's, it creates multiple houses, but it's not a subdivision.
Yeah, it's not fee simple lots.
Right, that's the, that's the difference, right? It, development all in one property, that's more like a condo type association. It is not technically a subdivision, because you're not subdividing the property into individual lots.
But we did have a ten lot subdivision with a road that got, that's got two lots left. We had another subdivision of, of, of a few lots. We had one subdivision of four lots that got. Um, abandoned and then they're not doing it. Um, so we had a couple of those. We really haven't had a lot of new subdivisions. Mostly development's been on older subdivisions. It just did. They've been built out.
Right, right.
Well, it's just the Fifth Amendment was, uh, payment in lieu of open space that Will got through.
Oh, okay. Oh, pilot, all right. Or, um. Right, in lieu of open space, right, right, okay.
The other area that could be done, which I don't know, I, is mixed feelings of how it helps economically. Is the cluster subdivision.
Yeah.
Or a conservation subdivision. We don't, we have mention of it, but we don't really have a process or procedure. But you could also argue the downsides of them not being economically, they help the town from a road perspective, but. They don't help.
Those were popular for a while. Twenty years ago, and there's been a little less activity on that front.
Well, some might argue it's fair to have a large lot, because people want a large lot, that's why they come to Monroe. And the large lot generates a house a little bigger and the bigger house generates a higher taxes. And because it's a little bigger, it generates less school kids.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Francisco, we did a lot of cluster in Shelton, but we have the sewers. We did have a cluster with Onsite and the neighborhood objected to it, because it was all large lot, so, you know.
Right, right.
I mean, the other area that we don't have much on. We did add in the zoning regulations for, for commercial land and some ability for private roads. Um. We have not explored that in residential lands. Again, there's pros and cons to that. I'm personally believe that that's a positive thing, not a negative thing. Um, you know, who want, why does the town want more roads? That's a very costly item.
So, uh, Will, picking up on that thread. Does, does the town want to remain supportive of additional subdivision development, or should it be looking to? Encourage other types of housing and, and maybe tighten things up a little on, on zoning. On, on the subdivision regulation side of things.
Well, that's not really a question.
The market can determine that, Will, Will.
No, I think what Francisco's asking you is what do you want the town to have in housing? And the market doesn't have to dictate that, you can.
Yeah, you can dictate those terms. If, if you feel that enough of the town has been developed with. Single family tract housing, large lot, and you want to slow that down a little bit. Uh, then maybe we revisit your regulations, both zoning and subdivision, uh, to tighten things up to. Maybe encourage other types of housing rather. Than, um, favor or, you know, I don't, I don't know that you favor that type of housing, but that's. Historically, that's the type of housing you've had over the past fifty, sixty plus years.
Or again, you support housing that might have private amenities that the town doesn't have to take care of. And that will just bring the value up on those houses and they'll probably bring the density down as well. I mean. You put five houses on a private common driveway that they're all responsible for. You're probably going to get a more exclusive type of neighborhood. Which is higher tax value, less school kids and no, no town to take care of the road.
Well, and Will, that goes back to, um, like a planned residential development or cluster housing development where. Where the, that, that road infrastructure is private and the town doesn't have to maintain that.
I mean, you can do that with conventional development as well. I mean, there are towns that I've seen that just take a proactive statement where they don't want any more roads.
Yeah, I think given the cost of maintaining your roadway and increasingly the cost of complying with MS four. Uh, permit requirements due to the runoff from roadways. Uh. This, this plan, this P O C D should probably take a position on. More roadway that the town is responsible for maintaining. And. That, you know, that ties into, we could, we'll, we'd cover that ground in infrastructure, but that ties directly into housing development as well.
And so if we go in the direction that I was talking about, the other things that aren't in the code aren't, that aren't well developed are. The standards that for those kinds of private roads or common driveways. We kind of do that ad hoc at the moment.
Gotcha. All right. Let, let's, um. We're about hour ends, let, let's keep marching on. Facilities and services. And so here is our goal, provide a hu- provide high quality facilities and a high level of service to residents, property owners, business owners. And visitors in a fiscally responsible manner. Uh, how do we feel about that goal?
So what's included in facilities and services?
Yeah, um, well, services are all municipal services you provide. You know, everything from. Town, you know, town hall offices to, uh, street maintenance, to parks and rec. Public safety, you name it. And facilities are all your municipal facilities. Um, and, and, oh, and school as well, and education as a service. Uh, we're, you know, this is, the board ad does their own strategic planning, so we'll, we'll have a limited amount of overlap with them. F- focus more on, uh, the facilities. But, um. You know, facilities are your parks, your, your town municipal buildings. Uh, facilities also include, uh, well, I mentioned parks as open spaces, um. Typically building, buildings and, and properties or sites and, and. We have infrastructure in a different section, transportation infrastructure and infrastructure, of course, are facilities as well, but.
Would we want to mention something that you have high quality, but is that the same as kind of, you know, opted, up to date or more modern technology for some of these things? Like whether it be town hall or, uh. Other department.
Yeah, so what I would recommend is that we elaborate on that in, in, in the strategies that we develop. So one strategy might be. To ensure that town facilities are up to date techn- technologically. And, uh, maybe from an efficiency perspective with its systems. And then we could have other strategies that really help to define what we mean by quality. Help us understand that a little better. All right, any, any thoughts? What, what does the town need to do? To. Better care for its facilities? Are there some outstanding needs? What, what do you see as, as being something that's? Been overlooked year after year?
Well, we don't really have anybody here, any representatives that could really let us fill us in on this. I know when we had the other meeting. There was a list of about twenty things that they wanted done. But no one's here tonight to, you know, to go over that, really. You remember, Francisco, that people that came in and gave us. One thing after another that needed to be done?
What, are, are you talking about the, like, the energy? Uh, from like the efficiency and sustainability perspective?
That, yes, and, uh, modernization of facilities.
Right.
Well, the town talked about, there was town hall was one, obviously an EMS building, something everyone's talked about. I think the fire department talked about their buildings. Um, the, uh, public, public work, work, works was, uh, were out there's. Uh, the housing authority too, I think, was. Quite vocal on, you know, the, and that's the needs of the kind of seniors and stuff, but their facilities.
Mixed use.
Everybody came in and.
So may, maybe I can revisit those meeting notes, because we did get a lot of. You know, guidance from that meeting, very specific. Maybe I can revisit those meeting notes. And, and try to call out some basic areas of need and strategies.
I mean, I could speak for Monroe EMS. They couldn't get the garage door open the other day for the paramedics' car to get out, so that wasn't good.
Now, where? Where are you guys with the development of the new building? Where is that at?
Yeah, Ryan, where are we with that?
I don't know, I've been sat out of every meeting, so I'm not sure.
I'm still waiting for the revised plans according to the approval.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I go in the hallway during those meetings.
It was approved. We did our part. He's, I think he's just.
I'm waiting for their submission. They haven't submitted the plans according to the approval.
Oh, okay, that's where it's at. All right.
But I, it's a funding issue, Ryan. Where are they funding wise?
I, as far as I know, uh, Jonathan? Town council, where are you guys on funding?
Oh, I see.
For the EMS facility?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, Terry, council member Terry Rooney is leading the effort, uh, for, uh, that. Committee, uh, which includes, uh, Mike Vitello and a few others, John Brennan. And, um, they. Are, I think there, there's working on. Uh, paying, uh, whatever the initial amount is for the plan, and then they have to submit that plan. Um, there's been no hangup at town council anytime. Any funding question for the EMS facilities come up, we have, um, approved the pre-approved. Funds at the town meeting that we had for it. Um, for regular capital projects, uh, many capital projects were put on hold because of the current pandemic. And as the budget cycle evolves for next fiscal year. Uh, Subcommittee of the Town Council will be looking at our, um, capital projects for. Next fiscal year and moving from there, but there's been no discussion moving away from. A new EMS facility and from everything I understand, despite some delays because of the pandemic. Um, the facility is still on track, uh, to be, to be funded. Um, and go forward.
Yeah, I think about. Okay, so, all right, so that's an. Okay, so, all right, so that's in the works, that's going to happen. Uh, do do we have any other specific facility in town that is really in need of attention or reinvestment, updating, modernization? What what jumps to the top of that list? Is it town hall?
Yeah.
Public, yeah, public, their whole site, right?
Yeah.
So if we're looking at a site, it would be public works, site and operations and if we're to look at a building, it would be town hall, is is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And where where do you stand as community on energy management, energy efficiency, uh, you know, al- alternative energy sources like solar? Is there been any work put into reducing, shrinking that energy footprint and energy bill?
And I think we sued the power company recently.
So there's that.
That's what I think the board event is looking into that, so.
The board event, it's has done some stuff at the high school. I don't think they've done much anywhere else.
Okay.
Um, town hall, nothing that I'm aware of.
All right.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot more room to be done.
Yeah, okay, I I think we should point to that because that's something where you you can, whatever investment you make, you can get get your money back very quickly. All right. All right, I'm I'm listing that.
Well, Francisco, on the town hall, it's not just the building either, it's also the site, so.
Yeah.
We did, we did repave the the lot.
Yeah.
It wasn't, it wasn't a complete redo, but that should last a few years, but the curbing is really, really, and the town's been sued and had issues with.
All right. Okay. So the building and the site. All right, and I, you know, I know that, you know, the police department's downstairs and they they spent some money several years ago to expand and upgrade and and they're they they've talked about how they're already outgrowing from mostly from a technological perspective that but uh.
And they also don't have a good place for the vehicles in bad weather.
Right, 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 yeah, they they talk about needing some sort of carports or something that. Okay.
Although we did, we did approve one.
You did?
Yeah.
How long ago was that?
I don't know, four years ago.
No, no money behind it, though.
Well, I don't think they, they wanted to build what got approved.
Oh, I see, okay.
It was probably more expensive than they had budgeted.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Okay, uh, that's a decent list. I'll I'll review the focus group notes from that meeting because we did get a lot of very clear, specific direction from that, and and I'll put that into some strategies that that makes sense, obviously with town hall and public works being a focal point and and energy efficiency, sustainability being another area of focus.
Those are physical plant stuff. I mean, the service end possible, obviously, and I know parking wreck and facilities.
We haven't talked about services, um, thanks. Uh, well, you you folks tell me what needs to be done, if anything, on the service end to I don't, improve what you're providing uh to be more efficient, effective, I I don't know, you tell me.
Well, a lot of people like waste collection, for instance. I don't know how that works. Is that a big expense?
What's the history there? Has it ever been municipal?
No. No.
Never.
And I imagine D P W has no interest in.
They do bulk waste collection perhaps, but not not normal garbage.
Right, do they do?
We're Trumbull for transfer station.
Okay, do they do leaves?
Uh, they may do, do they do leaves? I don't know.
I don't think so.
No, okay. Is that something?
Do a Christmas tree pickup.
Well, that, which would be bulk, yeah, okay. Is is that something we bother chasing if it's always been that way for some reason? I I doubt public works is really eager to expand their operations on that front. Do we, do we just accept that that's the way things are in Monroe? Or are there?
That's pretty much the way it is everywhere around here.
Yeah.
As you get into an urban area.
Right, right. Okay.
This is Barbara Thomas on the Conservation Commission. I just want to add something on, maybe not bulk waste collection, but on recycling, which I know is not something that's unique to uh Monroe as a problem, it's a problem everywhere, but um, we we don't do much to educate, I mean, it's something a conservation commission wants to look at, is trying to educate uh residents on how to recycle better, what can go recycling gets, it's a lot more complicated than it should be, um, and it also is a huge cost to the town. Where it used to be a, I think these, most towns used to make some money on recycling, but that all fell apart a couple of years ago, and now it 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 costs a whole lot uh for recycling, but, you know, it should be something that we address to try to improve it somewhat. It's just not addressed at all in this town. A lot of towns do a whole lot on recycling, and we don't do anything to educate people about it.
How how is recycling collected?
To the garbage companies.
Yeah.
And but they bring it to the town's transfer station, is that correct? How how does that work? Or is that all privately administered and then the town just pays the balance?
I I think that's what it is, yes.
Okay, yeah, right. So whereas it used to be productive at one point, it now just costs more money.
Right, but that's everywhere, that's
Because it's not getting sent right now to China. That's why.
Yeah, yeah.
Or the ocean.
Yeah, it's all just
And because, like, ninety percent of plastic doesn't actually get recycled and, yeah, and glass, and glass is totally useless and, right.
Rose paper.
Right.
We almost had a cool place that was going to recycle glass.
Yeah, we we blew that one.
Yeah, that's true.
They they wanted to go where they went.
Okay, so there's maybe some education that could be done, uh.
I don't, I don't, by the way. But that's a topic for another day.
Could you repeat that? I missed it.
Uh, it's Bruno. I said, I don't fully believe that. I I said, but it's a topic for another day.
Okay, all right. Well, let's uh let's point to any other needs on on the service end. Anything else this plan should be recommending with respect to services?
I I mean, Parks and Rec was, is always requesting more fields, correct? It's pretty much something they always seem to need and want and.
Uh, Wolf, yeah, Wolf Park, they're they're looking to uh construct uh a new soccer field in the back of uh your center.
On our recent field uh planning and zoning issue, non was stemmed because the the group got cut off by Parks and Rec to use their field, so they needed to expand time on their own.
I I think they have the same problem with indoor courts as well.
So it's a need to expand.
I mean, Chalk Hill was a loss to the rec programs.
Yeah, because there's that night, that basketball court and everything in there.
Yeah, right. Okay, so maybe there's the need for some more facilities for Parks and Rec to help improve their services or their ability to provide service.
Well, they also have plans for different things in Wolf Park, which is our primary resource.
Right.
Obviously, money is a factor, but there are quite a few different facilities that could improve that park and provide greater active recreation. Um, obviously, it needs money, but there should be a focus on implementing some of those ideas.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, it's not just Parks and Rec either that need the fields either, it's it's the different soccer programs, the baseball, cricket programs, lacrosse, different organizations that aren't necessarily fall under Parks and Rec, but we're all always fighting over the same, the same fields every spring and fall.
Okay.
Right, and that's what I was really bringing up with Parks and Rec, in the sense Park and Rec sometimes got bumped inside because of the school bumping them. So it's kind of a trickle all the way down, school, town, to the outside users.
Okay. All right, well, let's um, that that's enough to get started with. Let's keep moving, we we're we're about an hour and twenty minutes in, we saw a lot of ground recovery. Transportation and infrastructure.
Starters.
Here's our goal, improve and expand transportation options to ensure greater connectivity within town and to the region. Maintain and improve infrastructure in an environmentally and fiscally responsible manner. How's that for the the big goal?
What do you mean by expand?
Well, to expand transportation options would be like expanding your bike trails, expanding sidewalks.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that. I don't know why, when I read it first, all I'm thinking about is roads, more roads.
Yeah, I I know it, I, well, that the last part of that tries to put that into context, you know, environmentally and fiscally responsible, more roads is not, not really.
They alternative transportation options?
And maybe need the word modes or.
Improve and expand alternative transportation modes, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Option of modes, that's a good one. Because modes refers to something other than just cars.
Cars.
Okay.
Question on the transportation and I, how far up twenty-five does the current bus route go?
Up twenty-five?
I don't think they're running it at all.
No, it it was, it was discontinued shortly after it was introduced.
Okay.
Yeah, they lost a lot of money, Nicole.
It only went
Amazon?
It only went to fifty-nine, Route fifty-nine.
Okay. I'm just thinking ahead, if we're putting up senior housing where we where we're looking at on twenty-five, and we're looking at nursing homes and assisted livings, if they happen to fall on a main corridor, you may wanna, you may need to look at buses to bring in workers and to allow seniors to go back and forth if they don't drive.
You're absolutely right. Especially for workers.
Yeah, because a lot of them are coming from urban areas.
Yep.
I I used to work in a lot of
Expand the Greater Bridgeport Transit.
Yeah, just a food for thought, if we're going to bring in senior housing and those types of uh medical facilities.
I know we had a recommendation in the Route twenty-five, one-eleven plan to expand the one-eleven service further north to reach uh town hall campus in that area. Stops far short of town hall right now.
Well, it doesn't run either, that one doesn't run either.
That one doesn't what?
That one went to Big Y, and that doesn't run either.
No, is that one not running right now?
I have to double-check these. I don't think any of them are running anymore.
No, there's, there's one that stops at Stop and Shop. I get stuck behind it sometimes.
Oh, it does? All right, so that's still
Yeah, it was just the one-eleven that was discontinued, twenty, the twenty-five route still.
The twenty, you got
No, no, one-eleven, Stop and Shop on one-eleven.
Vice versa, excuse me, it was twenty-five that was discontinued, one-eleven still runs. Yeah.
They might have cut the number then, oh.
Yeah, they had two different one-eleven buses, like one-eleven, one-eleven X, maybe? And I think maybe they cut the the alternative route. But it, there's still a one-eleven route that runs up to the Stop and Shop. Okay, so more on the alternative transportation uh end. Uh, and then infrastructure, of course, also means typically associated with transportation, your your bridges, which you've you've had some bridge improvements recently, you're in pretty good shape on bridges in town. Uh, your your stormwater system, which, you know, the MS four program covers a lot of that ground. There are still outstanding needs there. Uh, you know, your repave schedule, like most communities, you know, the budget doesn't keep up with the lifespan of the roads. You're on a, I think maybe a twenty-five-year schedule right now, it averages out out at um not too many roads that last twenty-five years.
Yeah, I think we're like three miles a year.
Right, so if you take a look at what the town's responsible for maintaining the amount of mileage, and you divide by how many miles you get done a year, that gives you your average lifespan, which is is not a realistic number.
Yeah, and that gets back to my whole point of the, of not wanting more roads, because
Yeah.
um, although we haven't had a lot of subdivisions, and the ten lottery, I said, did generate our new road. That old subdivision that was at bay for a long time had a very, has a very long road.
Yeah, yeah.
It just came on the tax rolls or on the, not tax, on the D P W rolls, so.
There roads are costly, prob- probably even more costly than school kids. All right, um, well, I I had mentioned the twenty-five, one-eleven study. And of course, that's a long-term and in part regional study. It is, was there anything recommended in that that the town really liked, that the town would love to see move forward? You know, obviously, maybe sidewalks and some intersection improvements, but is is there anything there that we want to get behind in this plan to provide more support for? And I I take it most of you don't, don't read that report at night before you go to bed. It's uh, it's a, if if some of you are interested, take a look at, it's available on on MetroCops website. And it it did take a look at both corridors. In in Monroe, it was focused on, there were some intersections uh recommendations, mostly in Stepney and a couple other areas, and and we looked at also looked at bike path issues, expanding sidewalks, better connecting the the rail trail, the river trail. And um you know, improving uh crosswalks and sidewalks along the corridor, access management. So I think much of that it, we want to continue to advocate for in this plan.
Yeah, I was going to say, unless the, unless you present some of those broader stroke items, so the commission can decide if it wants to get behind them more fully, I would definitely suggest that at least we just, you know, we have that plan, it's not that old, so that the plan would kind of you know, just support that, yeah.
Okay. All right, are are there any other areas in town where there are some real deficiencies with respect to roads or other infrastructure?
There are reconstructing Pepper Street, Francisco. That's a, a five-million-foot project.
Is it's bonded?
It's under construction.
Yeah.
Happening, though, yeah.
Oh, that's the one that's under construction?
Yeah.
Well, it's a bridge, that's, there's a bridge with that project, right?
No, well, no.
No, no bridge.
There's some culvert improvements for the, for widening and and for the trail, but it it's mostly mostly configuration and um changing the Mostly configuration and um, changing the a more even grade on the road and getting a.
Yeah, it's vertical and horizontal.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay. Any any other areas of of need? And how how do we feel about sidewalks in town and and bike paths? The, do you folks want to strongly get behind expanding those facilities?
Yes.
We have been in favor of sidewalks wherever feasible, and they are expanding the rails to trails, right? They um, I think they're still in design phase, do you know Barbara? But there's money for that, south down to connect rails to trail.
Yeah, no, I know there's some, yeah, there's a project that's close to county. I'm sorry, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, you, go ahead, Barbara.
No, I said, I I know there's a project that's supposed to be started, there was some funding for something, but I don't know where that is, that Scott had gotten.
Yes, it's in final design with the state.
Yeah, but you bring up the point, Francisco, that we have the rails to trails, we just don't have a way to get to them without driving and parking, so.
Yeah.
So there's bike trails or sidewalks that can help lead to that, I think is a good idea. And everyone talks about how they want kind of like the town center, the town center. We might not ever have that, but if we look at the rails to trails as a form of the town center, which it kind of became with this pandemic, I mean. That rails trails was packed when.
Yeah.
Everyone was going out during the summer and, you know, if we can make that more of a focal point and stem off of that, I think it'd be a good idea.
Okay. All right, we we can focus on that. At uh, you know, supporting the ongoing work and maybe looking for opportunities to better connect to that that trail.
Yeah, Rick, when they're doing the Pepper Street there, are they adding sidewalks in there or any of that kind of stuff?
Well, they're adding the trail. The trail's gonna be alongside the road for a good portion of the separated.
Is that gonna be like a bike path?
Well, it's gonna be a bike path, but it'll be paved, you can walk on it, the the trail is for both bikes and walking.
Where's that gonna end up, on twenty five? Or no?
No, it that, no, it's it's connecting the part now that is a. I think there's a part that just goes along the street right now.
Right.
So instead of walking on the street, it's gonna be um, where, you know where the condos are?
Yeah.
It's gonna be on the grass, if you will, up a whole distance, I I think it connects all the way up to, I don't know if it connects all the way up to where you pick it up again. On the north end of Pepper, but. I can get a plan showing where it go, where it's going.
Okay.
Okay. All right, anything else on this before we move forward? Okay, good. All right, the last big topic area here is environmental resources. And our goal is to protect environmental resources, expand protection of open space. And conduct necessary measures to improve water quality in the town's water bodies and courses. How do we feel about that goal? So let's let's start out with some low hanging fruit here. Does there need to be more land in Monroe that's protected under conservation, I mean, either. Owned by the town. Or owned by land trust or some sort of uh, conservation deed restriction. Conservation based deed restriction.
Need to be more land protected in the town of Monroe. I agree a hundred percent with that, and we did hear from the town. And I think not only at our meeting, where they came out in person, but also with the survey.
Yeah.
There are large parcels in town that have been identified that we would like to protect. Um, obviously, we can't go out and buy them all. But as a commission, we understand where they are, at least, I mean.
Right.
They're all private property right now.
Yeah, so, and this is Barbara from conservation again, um, so we don't currently have an open space plan, but it is something that we want. To have added to the POC draft, um, is that, you know, there's, that there should be a strong recommendation. To write an open space plan, that is the conservation commission's responsibility, we are working on that. Um, but we we've not had an open space plan written up to this point. Um, so, yeah, we obviously strongly believe that there should be more open space and. With the fee in lieu, now, I mean, that's gonna take a while to add up, but there's a little bit of money there, and then also. Uh, there was some money that was transferred back, I'm not sure where it went, but um, that had been set aside years ago for. Uh, the conservation commission for for uh, land acquisition, it's not a lot, but um, that somehow got put into the, like, the general fund or something, and uh. Um, it just got, or is in the process of getting moved back to be something that can be used for open space, so that's, that's good, but, you know, we. In particular, want to, definitely want to in twenty twenty one, um, hopefully get an open space plan in place.
All right, well, I I would say if if there's anything that. You uh, feel based upon your discussions today with the conservation commission. That you're more or less agreed upon, that's a priority. Then share that information uh, with us, so that we can get that into this plan, because we do cover open space within the P O C D. Uh, it it's not nearly as robust or detailed as a separate open space conservation plan would be, but um. If if there's anything you're agreed upon as a commission. Then then let's get it into this document.
Okay.
There was a um, a series of responsibilities assigned to the conservation commission. Um, a few years ago. And I know the conservation commission is working on some comments for the committee. Um, so I hope to see those get in, kind of put into the P O C D. As, you know, giving some direction to not only doing the open space plan, but all the components. That go with that afterwards of managing and and protecting and identifying and turning some open spaces into more active. Some that should stay passive, that kind of stuff, that's what the open space plan could identify. So I would expect we should get some good language from the conservation commission.
Right, yeah, I know the chairperson Karen Bernaska had written something, I don't know if she actually sent it yet, but um. I'll I'll check with her, I'm gonna talk with her tomorrow, I'll check with her on that.
Good, yeah, I would appreciate any feedback you can share and and. You know, send it, send it to Rick or Will and and or Rick and Will and and they'll make sure it gets to me.
Okay, great, thank you.
We want to put, be sure we include the connectivity of open space that we already have as a part. Connecting trails. Um, because if some of these larger parcels um, become developed, we'll want to be able to allow. Easements that might connect one open space with another, running through some of these larger parcels in town.
Yep. There there's also the concept of of pollinator pathways.
Yes, yeah, we actually just started that. So we're, you know, I'm aware of it and and we actually are um, getting our site up on the main pollinator pathway. Uh, website, so, yeah, we're gonna start something.
Is is that the one that Aspenland Trust is administering?
Uh, no, that's the, what do they call it, the green corridor, so, no, there's a pollinator path, it it's all the same principle, but.
Yeah, okay.
Own initiative.
Okay, yeah, we worked with with them some on a pollinator pathway initiative, um, but it's been a couple of years now. All right, good, good, um, that's good to hear, and yeah, let's, by all means, let's support that as well.
I think we need to look at a buffer zone around some of our natural resources, like the aquatic river.
Yeah.
Right, um, we don't really, other than inland wetlands and upland review, there there's no real language. In any regulations protecting our waterway, our main waterway, Aquanic River.
Do you do you feel like the inland wetlands regulations aren't sufficient to?
They're usually not, they're usually not sufficient for.
Okay.
This need.
Okay. All right, good. And anything else on this front, anything related specifically to to water quality?
Well, I assume you can take some stuff out of the MS four plan.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, yeah. And and for those of you uh, that aren't familiar, MS four is is the state stormwater permitting program. Uh, which has uh, become a lot stricter in the past few years, requiring the town to do annual reports and develop a plan for reducing. Stormwater runoff and and, you know, and pollutants discharged into local water bodies.
Low impact development techniques should also be supported, we really don't have much.
Okay.
In that right now in our regulations, it's just so, you know, it's, if it's mentioned, that's great. But it's not really helping just to mention it.
Okay.
Right, now, we should put, hopefully, if we could put things in on, you know, encouraging green roofs and uh. You know, uh, rain gardens, uh, you know, whatever.
Payments, right.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Francisco, Rick here. Maintain a close working relationship. With the Southwest Conservation District, we've been working with them. And it's been a good working relationship.
Okay.
Don't you agree, Barbara?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Good.
We also want to protect ridge lines, I don't think we have anything in our regulations for that.
We have nothing about steep slopes, tree removals to any real extent, and uh, ridge line.
I mean, you see a house popping up on the top of this ridge, and I mean, that, it really ruins the whole.
Yeah.
The town to see these houses perched up there, I mean, not, I don't think we have a particular problem with it, but you do see it a lot in other towns.
Yeah. Okay. Good. All right, any any other thoughts on on this front?
Um, I would think, uh, I don't know, it's not really so. The the thing that always has quandared me on subdivisions with regards to water quality, when as, we end up finding all the the. The pension basins, replacing the the upland review areas. And, you know, people tout them as, well, they're, you know, a water quality, then they're creating a well in it, but they're not, they're they're really not, there are. That is a hole that holds water, and it takes away the natural habitat, it takes away the. And I've always advocated over my career that those really are not the most appropriate to be putting in a. Upland review area or, you know, in a buffer area, whatever you want to call it. Um, I understand that they need to go in the low areas, and that usually is the low areas, but there's other things that could be done to prevent that. Or reduce that.
Okay. All right, well, that's uh, that that's that's a very good list, I that that'll give us something to work with, I think we can move forward with that. Okay. Future land use map. This is a, one of the required elements of the P O C D. And the reason being is because this map is supposed to provide the foundation for your zoning. In that, if you entertain any changes to districts, introducing new districts or changing what's allowed in a district. It should be consistent with this map. And so this is a very important map, and it can take a lot of different forms. Uh, in some communities, it's very, very detailed. In other communities, it's a little more conceptual in nature. Um, providing, it may be pointing to a couple of areas of growth and everything else should more or less stay the same. Uh, we're kind of in the middle of the road here, we did this uh, uh. Based on your zoning districts, so it's zoning district based. And those different colors follow your existing zoning districts. And the light green indicates lower density residential, so that's your, your larger lot size. Residential, which is almost exclusively single family. And the darker green is higher density residential, so getting into smaller lot sizes or planned residential developments. And then we show uh, your mixed use commercial residential. Which, you know, at the time of making this map, you know, mixed use was on the table, and. Uh, you'll have to let me know. You know, if what was approved matches what we show here. Here, I think we're showing, you know, both your business districts here in this blue, be one, be two, if that's correct.
Yeah, I think there's some industrial lands that are not really captured by this, and.
Okay.
There's also, I mean, I don't, there, it, like, in one spot, if you look at the upper. Um, right corner where you have that, looks like a star, that's the dark green. That is correct as far as zoning goes.
Yeah.
That land, that land is protected by the town, the town owns that land, the town took that land over to protect it.
Okay.
So although it's correct, it's. We did. We rezoned it to the high density resident, to the to the three acre residential. It it it's not correct in the zoning as far as, it really shouldn't be the dark green, it should be the green next to it. But my point is, that and land to the north of it, although they're zoned that way.
Yeah.
They have restrictions on them, so this map should kind of show the areas that are not really related to density. Residential density, if they can't be developed that way.
Okay, okay.
And there may be some watershed lands that are similarly like that, so, because it, right now, it deceivingly kind of shows more areas. For residential development than actually exists.
Right, yeah.
There are some industrial areas that are missing on twenty five.
Are there, really?
There's definitely one up in the. Oh, no, maybe you did capture it, I guess it, I guess it didn't realize it was, the other one came down as much on the. So you did capture the one on the left side of twenty five.
So let's talk about those residential areas. Uh, particularly up northeast corner there, that are zone residential, but you have a lot of, you have some other restrictions on them. Do we want to? Create a separate, is it a matter of just kind of lowering the intensity of those to the lighter green to suggest that they're lower density? Or are there areas where, that are protected open space that we want to call out into a separate class? To show where all the protected open space is?
Well, what's the advantage to, what is the advantage to rezoning? Um, like, open space and protected open space and the Kelda lands? And the aquarium lands, is there, is there uh, an advantage to rezoning those?
That's a separate question than what Francisco was asking, but it's a good question, and I was thinking of that on the previous. Previous topic. Um, and towns have done that, Mike, and like, for instance, there's been towns where they have large. large land holdings, like golf courses and stuff. And they are currently zoned for residential development, which could generate quite a bit of density, and some towns have gone in and created recreation zones, which kind of keep that from happening. You can take that same concept to protected open spaces that may be not as protected as you think, because there are some lands that could be state land or aquarium land, that may be in their holdings, and they may not get rid of them or want to get rid of them, but there may not be any restriction on them. And they could get rid of them.
Yep.
To do what you suggest would make sense.
So then we need to change this map to reflect that.
Yeah, and the same with town holdings. There are towns, town holds a lot of land that has no restriction on it whatsoever. And people just perceive it as open space, but it's not really, it's not protected that way.
Right, aquarium does sell off land.
Yeah, well, I think Half a Wolf Park is not protected by any restriction.
Right, which is why we show it as residential, because it's zoned that way. It's, it's maybe owned by the town, but it's, it's not protected, right, it's not deep restricted.
That would, that would play into Mike's comment about, should we rezone those to someone that would do that?
So we, we could show the existing protected open space parcels and town-owned parcels, and we could point to that as either a protected open space, or even a municipal or institutional use. We could more or less cement those into place. Even if they're zone residential.
Yeah, I mean, because I think there are some that are outright protected with strong restrictions, and there would never, like the Webb Mountain stuff is all protected.
Right, right.
Well, the only ones that are really protected are the ones that we have state grants that help us purchase. Other than that, there is no other protection, really.
Well, some of the, I mean, maybe it's a minutia layer, but the subdivision open spaces are all protected, can't be built on.
Yeah, those, those are pretty scattershot, and they're
Yeah, that's true.
kind of part of the residential development, right?
Yeah, that's true.
Francisco, Rick, I'm inclined to add more categories. I feel that's the direction the commission should go. So I think Will and I will give a, we'll do our, our presentation on it first.
And Francisco, does this, is this the map where the state is going to say, this is where you got to talk about water and sewer?
We can show it on this map. We can also show it separately. Now, for communities that don't have sewer service, we can provide a, a simple map where we show existing water and wastewater facilities, and we can provide a statement that says, all of Monroe is a shall be a non-sewered area. And that's, that suffices as your plan.
So I guess that, that statement there
Yeah.
really needs to be, you know, floated to others.
Do we want to, do we want to restrict sewers from everywhere in Monroe?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, oh yeah.
That's my comment.
So that begs the question about particularly along the Trumbull border, where you, you have properties that could connect into Trumbull's system, and you could see that creeping up the end of Monroe.
I don't know if that's necessarily a bad thing now.
No, no, we do need to take a position on that in this plan.
Well, what does anybody else think? I don't think we should restrict expansion of sewers, especially in business districts.
Yeah. I wouldn't want the P O C D to make it seem like we are going to strive for sewers, because I think we pretty much exhausted that.
I don't think you can take it out either.
Yeah, no, I'd be okay with, you know, not restricting it, but I definitely don't want people in the next 10 years taking the P O C D and still saying, we, oh, we need to install sewers all through town, because I know we're still waiting on a sewer study, I think, but I'm pretty sure it's going to tell us that it's, it's not really going to happen.
How how bullish do you want to be on the potential for sewers being a factor? Is, is it just that you're open to and receptive to connections into Trumbull's system, and you'll tolerate maybe expansion of sewer up 25 and 111 in those commercial districts? Is that the extent of it?
Well, why else is a bad idea? You haven't really convinced me.
You don't have the road infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think they're a bad idea, I just don't think it's practical. I just don't think it's something that's going to happen within the 10 years, and I know it's, the idea of the P O C D is to have this be a plan. And the past 10 years, we've had P O C D that said, oh, expand sewers, and everyone talks about it, but again, I feel like we have this, and I could be wrong, but I thought Town Hall was having a sewer study done. Rick or Will know.
Yeah, Metro Card was assisting the First Selectment's office on that. It really hasn't moved really that far down the line, though.
So, I mean, yeah, and it's not that I'm against sewers, it's just that I'm against promoting something that might just be impractical.
Why don't we just say that we support that the plan get moving and maybe get a report out?
I'd be okay with that, just an extensive sewer study happening, even if it is happening, and then working off the basis of that.
Yeah.
And then you can, you can update this plan. Once that report comes out, you've had opportunity to review it, if you, you really want to get behind some of its recommendations, you can update this P O C D at that time. You, you don't, you're not married to what this says for another 10 years. You do have to bring that to a public hearing, though, that change. Okay, so I've got some marching orders on this, and it's something I can work with Rick and Will on. In identifying municipal and institutional uses, as well as protected open space on this map as well.
Will you move on to something else? This, that question triggered something out of the thought in my head unrelated to this. And Jonathan, are you still on?
Yes, I am.
Whatever happened to the space needs assessment that was being done a year, a year and a half ago?
So last time I heard about the space needs assessment, it was probably pre-pandemic. It, it was being finished, was the last update that I received. So I would say that there were some recommendations from it, but the town council has not received the results of the space needs assessment. We do know that the firm that we contracted with did conduct the space needs assessment, and was putting together their recommendations. But we have not received the report at town council, but I do know that when last it was spoken about, that it was being finished.
Yeah, it would be great to get a copy of that before we finalize, because obviously that informs the facilities recommendations of the plan. All right, anything else on future land use map? Okay, let's move on, and it's nine o'clock, we've been at it for two hours, so, but let's make this real quick. Maybe this can be a homework assignment for you, but let's introduce it now. We've identified what we're calling three special areas of focus, that being Chalk Hill, Stevenson, and the quarry. And I'd like to hear from you. Is there another area of town, another property that you feel we should focus on, you know, call out specifically in its own section of the plan, and provide specific recommendations for? And let's, but let's start with Chalk Hill. And, you know, this, this, right, this is definition of mothball, it's just sitting there, waiting, it's being land banked, and we've had a lot of discussion about this property, and there's not a clear future for it. So I, it'd be great if we could take some sort of position on that in the P O C D and guide this, and does that, does that imply that this building really needs to come down and and if so, what, what is done with the site? You know, is the site an opportunity to expand athletic fields, maybe? Is, we talked about the limitations of development being that it's really part of a school campus, and not ideal for residential development, but could it be a good site for a nursing home? I, I don't know.
Well, we need to encourage recycling and not tearing down the building. It's not that old.
Do you think the building, it's reusable?
Yeah, it is reusable. It's not that old.
Okay.
I think we discussed this before, and I don't think it would be that much to get that building up to, up to code, right, Will? Didn't we look into this building?
Yeah, I mean, three, four years ago, four years ago.
Recreation, right, for parks and rags.
Well, it was more than just that. It was a multi-purpose use, some overlapped from non-town uses, but in the, in the realm of, of services to residents. And the, it came down, you know, it's several million dollars, man. The building has other opportunities that other buildings in town don't have. I think it's the only building, I could be wrong, but I think it's the only building that really is suitable for shelter.
Right.
Emergency shelter.
Although we, we talked about the high school also being suitable, provided it had more generating, generator capacity and some, a couple of other items, but
Yeah, I don't know if the building, physical plant, other than that stuff, maybe, I don't know.
Okay.
But, I don't know. I mean, I can send you the report, which gives you some background data, but
Yeah, please do.
wants to do with it. It hasn't really talked about it since it was mothball.
So I would say, I would say as a commission, you're in the position to have an opinion about this, and, and and to commit to some ideas in the plan. And you should seize the opportunity to do so. So we don't have to figure that out right now on this call, but I, I would say let's turn this into a homework assignment, give some thought as to what the town should do with this, from your perspective, of course. And send your thoughts on to Rick and Will, and they'll forward it to me, and and let's, let's put some ideas down on paper. Right, in that vein, and I realize the next two sites are somewhat more complex, because the town doesn't own them. And you have applications before you, and environmental issues, it's very complex. That said, what kind of guidance can we provide in the plan or support to facilitate a desirable reuse of this site?
Well, we should support continuing it as a business zone.
Okay, okay. Now it's zoned retail. And we talked quite a bit about that on the last call. And I take it, you don't want to go to anything much more intensive than that. Is it, what, B one or B two retail and maybe office or something?
It's B two, which is office retail, personal service.
Office retail, yeah. But you don't want to go to industrial here, is that correct?
No, this is a gateway to the town, one of our gateways. We talked about making it a village district last P O C D, but I don't think we should be putting any more restrictions on developing this site. It's so difficult to develop as it is.
Is, let me ask you this, is the horse out of the barn, given the fact you, you have an application before you? Do we need just to get out of the way and let this happen, or is there room for us to be prescriptive about it in the plan?
Well, the application before it doesn't have a, doesn't have proposal, it just has a, a means of making it expanded in the types of uses that are allowed.
Okay, okay.
Out of our survey, Francisco, do we, anybody, we've had people talk about the site, right?
Yeah, yeah, we, we asked.
And what was their feeling on what they wanted to see here?
You know, I need to revisit the responses on that. I, I don't recall specifically. I seem to recall open space or park being part of it. I, I'm happy to, I'm happy to dig that back up and circulate it to you folks to help with the process.
Yeah, that would be good.
Sure. Okay.
Hey, Francisco, Rick.
Yep.
You know, both the Enterprise Industrial Park and the Stevenson Lumber, both of the land use boards haven't gotten into the deliberation.
Okay.
I think that's going to take place after the holidays, so it's not going to be that far down the road, where you'll have a definitive answer.
Okay. All right, so what I would say is between now and then, let's give some thought as to what role the town should play, and, or the plan should play in guiding the future use of this property, and what kind of
Couldn't some basic language be things like, I mean, this is an anchor area for this whole northeast area, so those kinds of things doesn't really matter what goes there, other than the attitude is that it should be a, a development that really helps spur on and revitalizes this entire
Okay.
retail, because there is some other businesses on 34, and some across the street and a little bit up the road, which, you know, this will make a big difference too, and so this is sort of the anchor.
Yep. And, and the gateway property too, right?
Right, right, anchor and gateway, and, you know, it should have some relationship to the other businesses that are out there.
Okay. All right. You know, maybe we describe a, a big picture vision for this site, and we don't have to get too detailed on, on strategies, because, you know, much of this is in the hands of property owner to decide. But we could provide an overall vision, or what, what the town would like to see here, what the community would like to see. All right, well, let's, in the interest of time, let's keep moving, our last last big nugget here is, I don't know. How many of you have actually been to
You got that labeled on, that's the quarry, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't know how that happened, but it's the quarry, obviously. I'll make sure I correct that for the, for the document I email you for the record.
I think, to me, and the committee obviously will have their own pains, but rather than like the same idea, we have the issues that we have an ongoing application rather than like the same idea, we have the issues that we have an ongoing application. The focus here really should perhaps be on the industrial park because we've seen some improvement in industrial park with some of the uses that have gone in there finally. But there's still a bunch of outlying parcels that are smaller than this, but are just as disturbed. And I would suggest that the focus be on, you know, continuing the path of the, the recent uses that are put in there and to get more of that rather than and, and the other thing is recycling type businesses, the green business. And when I say recycling, I mean, green businesses.
Yeah, yeah. Well, let, let me ask you this, should we be zooming out and, and looking at this entire industrial park area rather than focus just on this property?
Yeah, I was just going to recommend that, Francisco.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Enterprise Park, yeah.
Okay. I will do that.
You know, when it comes to, when it comes to water quality, Francisco.
Yeah.
There's a sub topic here for this area because these roads are enormous and I don't believe they have too many curves.
Uh huh.
So, and they're, they're straddling tons of wellings.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
Well, there could be a lot of improvement for MS4 with regards to this area alone.
All right. Good. Right, so any, uh, any impressions on, on, if we, we were to zoom out and take a look at this industrial park? What types of uses we might consider expanding this area to? If, if that's the direction we want to go? Does it need to be more flexible or more permissive, I, I, I suppose? Well, it, it, it's something to think about whether or not your, the existing zoning district, industrial zoning district provides enough flexibility to allow for future development here.
Well, one time we were thinking about rezoning that to like I3, right, Bill or Will?
Well, we were trying to solve and give a home to contractors, yards.
Right.
Right, training.
Which is, which isn't really much for the economic factors because it doesn't generate much, but a small area, we were trying to, you know, think of how to, because the central area where the quarry is, is sort of hidden from the rest. So that was one idea, but I do think the green businesses is an area to tackle because that's, you know, we're going to get benefit out of that. Um, we should be ahead of the curve on that.
Okay.
So what are green businesses, Will?
Well, I'm just thinking businesses that either are green or working green technologies. You know, that's a, a, an opportunity that hasn't yet grown, you know, hasn't really developed in the U S, but it's going to. And we should be ahead of that, not behind it. We, the last thing you want is have somebody with a great business and they can't come in because we have to change the zoning for them.
I was going to ask, has there been any, has there been any industries that have come in like that? That we've had to either turn away or they've gone elsewhere because of restrictions?
Um, and, and I, I don't know if we turned anyone away. I think there's been several opportunity, times when we've had to amend the code to make certain businesses work. Um, not all of that necessarily was beneficial, but, but to some extent they were. I mean, right now it's big on warehousing, distribution and manufacturing. Those are the three main categories in the industrial zone. And in some ways, some of the green businesses might be excluded under those definitions if they're not really manufacturing something.
Right, maybe, right, maybe you need to allow for a laboratory or office.
Well, we do allow office, so the office and maybe R and D fits in there too. I, you know, again.
Yeah, it would be R and D, yeah.
So Will, what are the green businesses?
I don't know them all because they all haven't been invented yet.
Well, so, so well, how will we be able to write a regulation if we don't even know what they are?
Well, you have to make sure, well, that's not that easy all the time, but we have to look at our, what uses we have that we aren't otherwise precluding something that, that, but that's part of looking at like marketing, what are we marking towards? What businesses are there? We have to look at what are those kinds of businesses? What are their needs? And do our definitions for uses preclude them?
And, and within the plan, even if we can identify those specific uses, we can at least talk about uh, having this area be flexible enough to accommodate certain types of emerging enterprises.
Right.
And that, and that the zoning should remain flexible and responsive to emerging businesses and technologies to allow for that type of development in this area. And that, and that's, we can, we can point it in that direction, e- even if we're not listing specific types of businesses within the plan.
Okay.
Okay. That's good. I've got some clear direction. We'll zoom out to the entire Enterprise Park. You know, we'll think about how it can accommodate those future businesses. And we'll, we'll focus on some of the environmental issues in this area, including water quality and compliance with the MS4 program. All right, um, we got a lot of work done tonight. This was incredibly productive and helpful to me and to us. So thank you for putting the time in. Uh, next steps, we, I need to take everything I heard tonight and start to develop, populate the plan with some strategies based upon what I heard. Uh, I would continue to appreciate and could use whatever feedback that you have uh, that we didn't, if we didn't flesh it out tonight, that's fine. You know, late, you know, later this week or next week, if something comes to mind, feel free just to send a a list, a paragraph, whatever it is, uh, over to Rick and Will so they can get to me. And I'm, I'm very receptive to whatever input that you have. We'll get that into the next draft of the plan. So right now, the plan, we have the vision statement, we have our goals and I'll refine some of the language in those goals, and then we'll introduce strategies and where the, the action uh, steps are, are obvious to support those strategies. We'll go ahead and, and provide those and populate the plan with those. We'll start to shape up the implementation plan, which is the summary or the, the table that compresses all this information. And then we'll get that back out to you for your review. And at, at this point, I think the goal would be to do all that by the end of this month. Does that make sense?
Well, except for the month.
I, we're only a weekend, yet the month is halfway over. I, I know, it's tied on my end too, but we need to aspire for, keep, keeping this thing on schedule. So that's, that's the goal. And, and let's think about coming back to this, uh, maybe at your first meeting in January again, or a special meeting uh, to review what we come up with and where we're at.
All right, good. We'll look at the agenda when it gets to January and see if we have time to do it during a regular meeting.
Yeah. Good.
Does anybody have any parting questions for Francisco? Do I want to thank everybody for attending and sticking around this long, for those of you who did? Um, and we'll, at this point, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 No names.
Unanimous.